...to order. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. It appears from the red light that we're being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Okay. In the note from, uh, la, 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 la. What is it? Marissa, she said they may or may not be here. Did you get an electronic copy of that?
I did not. Alls I got was response to my emails saying that they would drop this off before the, and if they couldn't get to the office before I left, then they'd be at the meeting, so.
Okay. I have a copy of the decision. Has everybody had a chance to look at it? The folks that need to sign it are, um, myself, Jim, Dennis, Virginia, and Sue.
Do we really have to sign it even, even though it's?
I can't force you to do anything you don't want to do.
Of course, don't want to sign it.
Let's start over with Jim. Okay. Something else that I know you had questioned, Jim. And when you question things, you get the opportunity to pursue them. So, so I have gotten a copy, and you folks may want to look at this sometime tonight. This is the 2019 MIAA rewards status report as of all four 2019. We need somebody to check and see that we get credit for following to those classes. The ones that are M-I-I-A.
Can I ask what that, the initials stand for?
Massachusetts Intermunicipal Insurance.
Intervah Insurance.
Association, okay?
Thank you.
But what this is, is like it's in categories, and there's automobile rewards. They can get up to 4% off of their, um, insurance on the automobiles if they meet any of these. Okay? So the categories are automobile, general liability, um, law enforcement, property, uh, public officials liability, which is where I think we would fall. You can get a maximum of 8% off if people take courses and supposedly like the MIAA. So do you, if you just want to take a look at what it looks like, up at the top here, it tells what percentage we've earned so far, and then the maximum credit we can get for the year. And then it shows you what categories it's in. So if you just want to take, and then it's going to end up with Jim. Could we get, impose upon you to follow through on this? If I give you some names and numbers? You're good at that stuff, right?
I can copy. I can nag.
Um, well, I wasn't going to quite put it that way. But we can in fact, but there's no real way of knowing what gets posted. Now Keith, when you, you took two classes that were M-I-I-A certification.
Yes.
Did you sign in for those classes?
Yes.
So you know he took those first two classes, um, for cleaning board and zoning. So I don't know, and you'll have to see what the lag time is, how long it takes them to get posted. I don't know how you know what's posted there, but.
I'll call him and just ask them for transcripts on everybody from the board here, and I'll keep calling them every other day until I get them.
Oh, I picture it. I can just picture it. Okay, we have minutes, folks. How about if we do minutes while we're waiting for other things?
I'd like to approve the minutes of the meeting of April 10th.
No, March 13.
March 13? Or 10th?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those who gave rise?
Aye.
All those opposed? I'll take that as, um, unanimous vote unless someone tells me otherwise. Okay. And then, um, I don't know how many of you knew, but the planning board was kind enough to reinstate the extra money for Leanne.
Woo-hoo, nice!
Fin Kong.
Ah, Fin Kong.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Wonderful.
Um, we went, Jenny went, Rich went, and I'm trying to think.
Yes, and thank you.
The trick is to stay to the end.
Yeah, wear 'em down.
Al Roseberry went. So you have a lot of friends, Leanne, but it's not unwarranted. So, um, but we thank the Fin Kong for putting people first.
Lovely.
You have to stay to the end of the meeting if you want to know how it comes out. It, it, it's natural for a board to meet and discuss and listen to, and then they wait until... Uh, we were there. The, the selectmen stayed until the end too. Um, what else did I want to bore you with? Okay. Um, the MIAA class credit, no one has any objection. I'm going to stick Jim on them, and you can be in charge of seeing the eyes get posted.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
I'm assuming the, somebody in the finance department would be the person that would take all that to the...
I was surprised that there are a lot of people that aren't aware of that.
Well, but I mean, once I get everything to, to make sure that the town gets the credit on the insurance, they would be the ones that would chase the insurance.
I would think that would go through the selectmen.
Okay.
Uh, because they're the ones that pay the bills for the insurance and, you know, do whatever bidding is required. You could start there, okay? Um, it appears we have permission for the special project to get, um, uh, the database or spreadsheet of past permits done. And you're still willing to do that, Pat? You saw that the paperwork, I mean, you signed your life away.
Yeah, it wasn't a whole lot of signing, but yeah.
Okay. And my suggestion would be you can do up to 125 hours a year, and the year runs till July 1st, so if you had a chance, not that I don't want you to be, take a vacation after you retire, but, um, if you wanted to split it, my understanding is you turn in a timesheet once a month, and that it would be up to July 1st, it'd be applicable on November's taxes.
Uh-huh, okay, thank you.
Um, so we thank you for doing that, though, because it's something that we really need. I have, I don't know if I even have to do this now because they approved it, but I put together a, this is the request.
That's lovely, that's much better than I did.
Did you do one of these?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay. If you just want to take a look at it and if you approve of it, um, you don't sign yet.
That's right.
I've had some communication with Janet Latham from 51 Village Court.
Uh-huh.
And, um, actually, one of them came from the assessors, and the assessors was asking me, and I suggested that maybe Janet would want to be here tonight, because I said I could only speak as an individual, I can't speak for the board. But the assessors were having difficulty in determining who would have to be notified for the 51, um, uh, Village Court. And I said it would be similar, in my mind, to 245 River Road West, where once you get into one of these condo developments, everybody owns part of that land, so you have to notify everybody in there.
And they have to notify all of us as the Butters.
And all of Butters within 300 feet because that common land doesn't back along to that individual.
So she has a lot more than they originally did.
So I don't know where it stands. Leanne, I kind of thought she might be in tonight.
Yeah, but she might not come till 7:30 or so. I said we start, I told her you started at 7, but you had regular business to attend to.
Okay, so she, she might yet come in. So the guy, that's the guidance that I provided to the assessors. If anybody else has any other ideas as to?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Even though it's not open meeting?
It's open.
Why is she doing this as, as opposed to?
She had gone to the assessors and asked for an assessors list to put in the request.
She's confused about, um, the Butters' list for the condo association to amend the comprehensive permit and then one for herself to apply for in-law apartment.
Wouldn't they both be the same?
The assessors' list would, but she thinks she can apply for both.
She wants to have both hearings.
The same.
Next one and resolved.
She's not the condo association, though.
Well, I guess I told, um, I've told her in the past, and I think you said it to her too. She's more than welcome to come and meet with us, and we can discuss the process. We can't discuss the merits of the individual case, but we could tell her maybe what's needed and what kind of expense she's going to incur and what the order of things has to be. She has a letter from the condo association or something.
Yeah, but still isn't, wouldn't they first have to amend the comprehensive permit?
That's what she thinks she can do.
As an individual?
With this letter.
Oh.
So that's, you know, she may come in and discuss that, but we need to stay out of the merits of the individual situation that she's in and kind of talk about the prices and stuff.
Uh-huh.
Um, the dinner that they're having for, um, that you're going to and you're going to.
I'm in.
I'm going with you.
Yay!
Now, originally, I shied away from it because I kind of said, well, that's really applause for the planning board and what they've done. I mean, it's not us. But, um, the, the last note I got seemed to indicate that they really would like a good showing for Berlin.
Right, we all volunteer.
Yeah.
Take all those classes.
Yeah.
Free meal. You in?
No, I don't.
You got the note, did you not?
Yeah.
Bloody funny.
But you need to let them know by the 20th if you're going. And, um, I think we're going to put Ginny in charge of the bus, right Ginny?
Bus driver. You got it.
We'll all go together.
All right.
Um, in June, if at town meeting this new part-time wages passes, what I'd like to do, but I'd like consensus of the board, is as we authorized our clerk to pay bills, pay invoices, have him do the part-time wages to sign off for those. Um, and so it doesn't have to wait a month or maybe even more than a month before it happens. Um, so if anybody has any objection, please raise it. That was, I guess. Anyone have any thoughts on that?
No.
I'm assuming there's some sort of a time card or audit trail to?
Well, one of the reasons poor Jenny got stuck with this job is because having been highway superintendent, he did this in the past. So it might be well if he shows somebody else how to do it in case one of us doesn't get up in the morning, but, um...
I have a lot of payroll experience.
Do you?
If I can help.
Okay. So maybe Jenny and you can get together and you can show him exactly what he does. Okay, what about reimbursement for our CPTC classes?
I'm going to have all the paperwork that you have.
Okay. I'll have to run home in a few minutes and get mine. I got my receipt, but I didn't put it in the bag.
Do you have your?
Did you turn yours in yet?
No. Same thing, I think.
Do you have your paper that says you paid?
I, you wait 10 minutes when we're done.
Doggy, whatever.
But what, whatever, um, and you can give Keith a hand to filling out the expense sheet. Do we have any warrants or any bills or anything to look at? Or have you paid any that you need to tell us about?
Twenty-two dollars for a name plate.
Okay. Oh, boy, you're an expensive guy.
Wow, already.
Your name's not that long. Didn't even need to do this. I have a sharpie.
I like your attitude, Keith.
We have like $592 left to have our $600.
Wow.
Oh, the other thing I wanted to ask you.
You have part-time or something too?
I'm going into the State House for something else on May 1st. At the bookstore, they have copies of chapter 40A. Now, I had given that to a lot of people. Does everybody have that book?
Yeah, I think I do.
Sue, did you get it?
I don't know. I'm going to say no.
I've had this before. I think you got them before Sue was on.
Okay. So Sue needs one. Chapter 40A is the state law that governs us, and the State House.
Yeah, I got it.
In their bookstore. May I just see it for a second?
Yes, ma'am.
It's just like this, okay? And it just tells you, gee, she's taking a lot of notes. It just tells you what 40A says and does and what we have to adhere to. It tells you about variances and all that sort of stuff. Good midnight reading. So Sue and Keith, anybody else need one?
No.
Okay. And this is chapter 40A.
Lynn, am I writing these handwritten notes on the, on the, the?
Yeah, I don't see that we have anything from the Conservation Commission saying they approved this.
No, there's lines.
Did they sign it?
No, there's lines for them to sign it.
Okay. I would say, and if you want to know, you've got the other one then.
I've got the handwritten one.
Okay. I think the note should go on there if the Conservation Commission hasn't signed it as yet.
All right, so the first one says, "Subject to approval by Conservation Commission." You want it worded the same way, or do you want to say?
I thought we had a note from them saying they approved it.
Oh, do you?
Then we have a.
I think it was an email. I, I thought it was a copy of an email back and forth between the applicant and conservation.
I thought I read something either in, um, stuff that Leanne sent that said that the conservation had approved it.
I know that, yeah, I think the petition.
Oh, I think they, conceptually, they approved it, but they had to go back. After our last meeting, they were going back to them. I think there's, unless someone objects, probably safer to put it on there than not put it on.
That's my feeling.
If she's got signature blocks for the conservation office, then is it really necessary? I mean, if they don't sign it, then it's not approved.
When we sign it, it's approved.
Not necessarily, because we approve it.
Technically.
So I, I'm putting it on.
Okay. I'll go along with it.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the public? Uh-oh. Nothing?
I'm just here to answer any questions you may have relative.
How are you doing with, um?
We should have a copy of that.
The letter, yeah.
Of what they've used with Mark Rhodes.
Yep.
Has he torn down the house up there yet, do you know?
I don't believe we have.
That was, in the comprehensive permit, that was the, the marker for when construction was considered started, but I don't know why we, I don't know why we selected that as a...
In the comprehensive?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Jim.
There's an old house that was on that lot.
Yeah.
And in the comprehensive permit, it says that when he tears that house down, that's the official start of construction. And I don't know why we use that as the marker since.
I think that was a.
Starting point, you know?
I think that was an Amy thing, but.
I mean, he can, he can run around and do a lot of stuff on the lot without ever touching that house, so.
Which you, which you probably will, because that's going to be an early start. I mean, if that's the trigger mechanism, there's a lot of other stuff that's going to fall after that that's much more important.
But, but if they specify that's the start, you would think that house would be raised, and then they start doing it.
Right. But if I were him, I would time it, and it would be the last thing I'd do before I start building, because otherwise the clock starts ticking. He's going to, if it was me, I'd tear the house down and start digging a foundation the next day. The, the sequencing becomes important.
But I don't think this affects your duty.
I don't believe so either.
Because the way it's worded in there.
Right.
You determine when they need to be done and so forth.
The water tastings, yes.
So we want to thank you very much for.
There's a typo in there which will be corrected before they're all out to the.
Typo.
Yeah.
Doesn't affect the understanding.
Quality twice instead of quality and quantity.
Well, I think you did a nice job on the letter and particularly mentioning the bond that has to be issued. You know, we'll give some solace.
Took me a while to get it simple. I didn't want it complicated.
Nope, you did well. Anyone have any comments or?
No, thank you.
Was Mr. Minch sent a copy of that letter as well?
It's addressed to him.
Okay.
Yeah, he will be. Everybody listed on there will get it.
I know he's the primary.
He sure is.
Person behind pushing all that.
They've listed the five people from the addresses that were listed in the comprehensive permit. We did have a meeting to decide who was going to be in charge of this, and it said kind of clearly in the comprehensive permit, Amy's good, that it was up to the Board of Health because they're the ones that know the best about water quality and water volume and that sort of stuff. So we thank you very much, and you can express your thanks to the board. Did you get the copies of that, chapter 40B stuff for your folks?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, excellent. Oh, you're welcome to stay.
Yes.
I'm sure I am.
I do have a question, though.
Yeah.
Um, in a general question, when the, um, sorry, I was trying to read when it was ready. When the plumbing department issues a permit, does the plumbing and electrical see a copy of that permit that was issued? Or is there any way to know that what you're inspecting is different from what was approved of them?
Um, I'm not involved in the plumbing applications or wiring. I do get to see the building application because the Board of Health has to sign off on it. But other than that, I, I can't tell you what transpires.
So there's no way for you to know if what the applicant is presenting to you is the same thing that they're, they're?
Well, ultimately, it'll all, it'll all shake out at the end, and if there's any misrepresentation or anything like that, the person doesn't get an occupancy permit granted. There's a final inspection that ties all that together. Stuff can go on prior to that, I'm sure, but it's, it'd be pretty foolish to do that because it's only going to be costly to some, to somebody.
So in order to get an occupancy permit, all of the departments have to sign off on it, right?
My understanding.
Correct.
It's certainly true with the Board of Health. Nothing gets signed off until, um, those plans have been reviewed, there's been a, uh, as-built submitted, um, you know, all the i's are dotted and p's are crossed.
Are you looking for the ZVA?
I am.
You found us.
Are you guys in session already?
Yep. All right. Double checks.
Well, again, thank you.
I don't know if that answers Sue, but you might want to talk to those inspectors.
Yeah, yeah. I'll probably just follow up with it after your next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What else do you have? Are you here to speak to us tonight?
Um, I have a question, so yes.
Sure.
Um, we're in the process of.
Could you just identify yourself?
I'm sorry. I'm Virginia Mackey. I live at the Sawyer Hill Ego Village.
At where?
The Sawyer Hill LLC.
LLC, okay. Anything, could you spell your last name? Okay.
Um, and we are looking to submit an application tonight to the town leader to amend the comprehensive permit to, uh, uh, we need to know what it's about. I don't know much, but, um, what we need to know is how much to charge for that. That always told me.
I think it's $500.
Even for, uh, the, the development.
It's a comprehensive permit, and I think if you're making a, a change to it. Could I ask what type of change you have?
Yeah, I have, here, I just brought one of the packages packets.
We can't talk about the merits. No, 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 can't talk about the merits, but is it to increase the number of bedrooms? But what is it?
Essentially, and what we're looking to do is that we, um, we want to be able to request a special permit for an in-law apartment in one of the non-affordable units, but that's it. We don't want to have, um, like any specific number of bedrooms increased. I'm not sure exactly what needs to change in that permit in order to allow it. But that's essentially what we're looking.
Okay, in the permit, how many bedrooms are you allowed?
Uh, if I recall correctly, I think it's 158.
Okay, and are all of those bedrooms accounted for?
Yes.
In the permit? I mean, in the development itself, there are 158 bedrooms.
I leave the permit for exactly what we built.
So you're going to open the permit for one bedroom?
Yes. For my mother. It's worth it. For me and for her. Yeah. If it's possible.
Um, you do realize that it's an extensive process? It's not just a case of, because there's a whole bunch of people that need to sign off on it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, actually, I serve as a trustee, so I'm familiar with the process, and I've been working with the community.
And you aren't personally making the application, are you?
So that's the other thing, that I'm not sure, um, I mean, I am a trustee, and I'm also one of the owners of that particular house. And I'm not sure what the appropriate basis for all of that.
The application to change the comprehensive permit has to be done by Sawyer Hill LLC.
And that's how it's filled out. And I have support letters from the condo trusts.
Who's signing it?
Sign, I have.
Who's president of the Sawyer Hill LLC?
We don't have a president technically.
What do you have?
We've got six trustees. Any one of us can enter into fiduciary, but I have signatures from all six trustees on a letter supporting the application.
And you're sure you want to do this? You've checked with counsel and you know?
Yes.
The potential ramifications?
Uh, as far as I understand, the negatives would be that we're not allowed to. I don't think anything else.
Well, again, we'll be taking input from the neighbors.
Yes, absolutely.
And, um, the, it opens up the entire comprehensive permit.
For other changes outside of the request?
It's happened before, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm hoping that it doesn't have negative impact, but.
What if someone else in the unit wanted an apartment?
This has been communicated neighborhood-wide to both communities, and nobody else has stepped forward either saying that they disagree with our moving forward or saying that they wanted to be in on the, uh, the request. Because we understand that, um, the number of bedrooms as it was put forward originally was of, of major concern, and we did not want to make this request anything bigger than it absolutely needed to be. We wanted to be very sensitive to.
But this, you know, again, has to go, we're going to be going from the Board of Health. Yeah. Don't have a.
Yeah, there's, um, because we are under Mass DEP for our groundwater discharge permit, we know that that needs to be amended. We reached out to the DEP. They verbally said that they don't have a problem with making that change. According to our waste management company, they said that we are not, we're a little over maybe 50% of our, um, discharge permitted amounts available. So we have that going in process. Part of this request talks about how, um, we are doing that, amending the groundwater discharge permit, and that it would be, this would be contingent, of course, upon that going through.
We cannot, anyone can file to do anything they want to do.
Yeah.
Okay? It will be up to the board when it comes before them to decide if what you have presented is sufficient. And it will require scrutiny by all the other boards, whether it be conservation, whether it be, um, Board of Health, all of those things, okay?
Yeah.
Um, so just as, you know, it's a can of worms that you're opening, okay?
Yeah.
I would suggest that if you were to file for a comprehensive permit, and that's rather expensive for an amendment, that you have all six trustees sign. Now, that covers both groups.
On the application itself, I was hoping with the letter.
No, no, well, I'm only suggesting to you, okay?
Yep.
The trustees are for Sawyer Hill LLC, not for one of the two units, right?
Yeah, yes, but I actually got letters from all three condo associations. I wanted to be sure we're.
There's three condo associations?
There is, yeah. There's Camelot Mosaic and Sawyer Hill. Sawyer Hill is the primary.
Right, is the umbrella.
Exactly. Sawyer Hill is the primary and Camelot Mosaic is the secondary.
Well, Sawyer Hill would be the one that you need the.
Yes, and I have that.
We can only try to tell you what will be required of you. You're free to file anything you want to.
Okay.
This is not usually a speedy process.
I know.
So.
I know.
And I think it's kind of too bad because I know initially, hadn't you applied for a permit for an apartment and it got refused?
We did, because we weren't sure.
And then you got a permit to finish your basement or something?
So, yeah, there's a really long story behind all this and I don't know how much you want to get into tonight, but.
No, I just.
We had, we had done a permit to finish the basement and, and it has been, we had a certificate of occupancy that's been issued for several years now and the current building inspector revoked it. And so now we're, we're trying to go through whatever we need to go through to make it better and, you know, complete and what it needs to be. So, we started off at the building inspector's suggestion to submit an application for just our home to have a special permit for an in-law apartment. And it was determined that we needed to amend the comprehensive permit first. So, that was withdrawn and so this is us submitting to amend the comprehensive permit.
Okay, and again, I'm just saying that there's, someone had said something at one of the meetings that there are more apartments than just the one you have, is that true?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Not at all.
It's an expensive process, you're willing, I mean, it's perfectly up to you to start it.
Yeah.
We have a limited amount of time in order to hold a hearing. But especially because of that time, then at that hearing, we usually discuss it, okay? And decide what boards have to be involved. And, you know, sometimes this can take a couple, three months to get to the end of it.
That's my recollection of working through the process.
Well, I think the initial one was more like six months.
Much more, yeah.
Yeah. Are you also planning to file individually at the same time for an in-law apartment?
I didn't know if it was possible to do that, to try to speed up the process.
Well, anything is possible, you can apply for anything. My suggestion would be that, you know, I, if I were you, I would wait until you see the results of the comprehensive permit. Because nothing could be done on the in-law apartment until the number of bedrooms in the comprehensive permit is changed. So, that's up to you. Anyone else have any thoughts or any wisdom they'd like to share with you?
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
So, I think if this is the case, if she's going in filing that, I think we have, well, who's got a book? I think we've got what, 20 days or something to set up a hearing. I think it would be the same as, I'll also go to the selectmen and tell them that we need Amy back.
So, there's this stipulation in the comprehensive permits, I believe, that says if they can't sell a low-income unit in X amount of days, they have the right to sell it as a market rate?
Yes.
Do we get to take that into consideration? As far as I know, there's, there's very few low-income units at Sawyer Hill LLC now because they've all been converted over to market rates.
So, really? Yeah, we've lost.
Didn't they have to come to us?
Where are we now?
They only had two to begin with.
No, they did come to us and Mass Housing said that they could, we had a meeting with Mass Housing. So, what, where are we now?
In my discussions, and that's what I was mentioning earlier, the planning board has considered providing a trust, okay? And some kind of a passing of a law at a town meeting that would allow the town to buy the unit. And because the window's only 90 days for those units to be sold. So, they want to have a pool of money sitting somewhere and access to it. In other words, they don't want to have to call a town meeting to say, can we buy this property, okay? It would only be for a 40B that's gonna go into the class of market, okay?
They don't have to come back to us every time they do that?
No.
Well, it's written into it that they're allowed to do it.
Yeah, they put it on the market if they can't find a qualified buyer in 90 days, then they go back to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen can sign a release on it.
Because the last time, the two that they did, they came to us.
They told us about Mass Housing said it was okay and they got them. Because there was, there was a couple in that, in that section, they were going just for back taxes, they were down on like nothing. And they came down and talked to us. So, out of all those units, we only have two affordable right now?
That's not my understanding. My understanding is we lost two of the affordables.
Yeah, okay, there was two.
And maybe, there's only like 12 units there total.
Affordable?
No, 12 total units.
Oh.
It's not that big of a.
Oh, you're talking about Whitney.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you're Whitney. I was gonna say that, there was 36 and 20 something, it's like 52, wasn't there?
There's 10 down at Whitney and I think there were two affordable units at Whitney out of the 10.
Yeah.
And one of them has been converted. So, what they'd like to do is, and this is the group that will help them, this Mass Housing Partnership will help, if you want to take a look at this here, will help you form a trust.
I do remember discussing this, yeah.
Yeah. And then if we were to empower the planning board or the selectmen or whomever, if a unit does go the 90 days, then we, before the selectmen sign off, they can say, no, we want to buy the unit. And keep it affordable. There's some consternation about, well, after you buy it, what do you do with it?
Leave it on the market for, until it sells.
Well, if you can't find someone affordable in 90 days, do you think you're gonna find them in 120 days or 360 days? So, there was some question as to whether you would turn to renting it. Make, turn it into some kind of a rental unit.
And then you have to have a landlord, yeah.
And then you've got to have landlord cert.
Well, they do that, they're doing that, or the selectmen are already doing that with Boundless Adventure. They're essentially the landlord.
They are the landlord, yeah.
So, it's already set a precedent, so it's kind of.
What do you mean Boundless Adventure?
They own the property.
Yeah, the town owns the property and allows Boundless Adventure to be there and.
They have first option to buy for a dollar.
Well, they're still the owner of the property though. I thought we did. Didn't we have first option?
The town has first option to buy, but the, but it, I remember being in the selectmen's meeting and they, and.
Well, how can you have first option to buy on property that you're dealing?
I, that part.
They can also switch.
It was, it was, because the town had wanted a disclaimer and indemnity clause or something if they were going to be the landlord of this.
Well, as far as what we're talking about here about the 40Bs, I think that the answer is for there to be some kind of a trust that probably has enough money in it. Because they would only have to buy it at the affordable rate.
But the question, the reason I brought this up was because if we're opening up the comprehensive permit and the comprehensive permit says 25% must be low-income housing, how do you rectify that once you've opened it up?
My first call will be to the selectmen and say, call Amy.
Okay.
Because I can remember Tom and Judy getting here and that, and Mackey was here. And they wanted this, they couldn't rent it, they couldn't rent it, they couldn't rent it. It was years and it was, those apartments were gonna come off of our.
Affordable.
Affordable housing part of it. And we had to vote on it. If we voted negative, they couldn't take it off. If I remember right.
I think there was one permit that the developer was saying, although they'd reached a certain percentage, bless you. They couldn't meet that percentage, so they wanted to reduce the number of affordables. So, they were coming back to us to say, in order to make it a feasible project, we need to reduce the number. That, that's the only one that I remember that was like that. Could I just ask, now, I fully expect that, what was your last name?
Mackey.
Mackey.
M-A-K-I.
What's your first name?
Virginia.
Okay. So, we've been.
Same as me. That's how I remember.
Oh, because she had the name. Okay, if something happens and I have to call a meeting fairly quickly. When.
Emergency ZB?
No, 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 no. Why do we have to have an emergency ZB meeting?
Because in 40B you only have so, take a look.
20 days, did you say?
It's with the training I just went through.
You, you guys got no books down there?
So, if she walks down, so if she. I have an old book, so we're also being recorded for all this information here. So, if she walks down to that office, we have 20 days.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Sue can check in the book, but I think it's like any other permit.
It's only 20 days to, to schedule.
Well, that's, let's look at what the wording says.
We're here.
And you actually have to have a meeting, I think you have to schedule the meeting.
I know we had to have the last one before we had the next meeting.
I don't think we are. Shh, quiet.
It's gonna be a rough Friday night, Jenny. You let yourself in deep this time.
I always do.
If you find that you need to have another meeting, I'm available.
30. 30, oh, 30, corrected.
No later than 30 days from the date on which the comprehensive permit application is received by the ZBA, you have to open the public hearing.
Where is that from? Is that in ours or?
No, it's in the 40B.
No, it's in the, in the thing she just handed down.
The thing I just gave you.
Because you're right, I'm in the train that I, that we just went through.
Take, take a look in what day do you want.
Later than 20 days from the date of the DHCD's decision on a safe harbor appeal.
18th. Unapplicable.
Decision, that's the date of decision.
18th.
15th.
Comprehensive permits are different.
Thank you so much. Going in, 15?
You have to leave the chart.
Here, Lynn. There you go, madam.
No later than seven days from the date on which the comprehensive permit application is received by the ZBA. Distribute the application to other boards in this apartment and request their comments. 14 days before the public hearing date, no later than 30, so they have to publish the notice, okay, which we know. No later than 30 days from the date on which the comprehensive permit application is received by the ZBA. We have to open the public hearing.
Okay.
So, would that be our next meeting?
No, she walks down there and gives it to Louise.
So, she, if she turns in it tonight, we'll, this is the 10th.
Is that considered given to the ZBA once you give it to Louise?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we got 30 days, so it's, the 10th, so we got one, two.
Friday. May 10th is a Friday.
And our next meeting would be the 8th.
Oh, that's perfect. Beautiful. It's just perfect.
It's gotta, there's 30 days in this month, so.
Yeah, we're the 10th today, so today's less than the 8th.
Oh, so we're gonna be meeting on the 8th.
Yeah, it's perfect.
How do you like that? So, it's less than 30 days, we're gonna get together again.
Right, and we're like, it's what we're supposed to, and we don't have to move our schedules around for all these people.
And I'll tell you, if, in fact, there is an application for.
Me.
Modification to the comprehensive permit, I'm going immediately to.
The attorney's office.
The selectmen and say, I want to call Amy. And have her write the notice and have her take a look at the permit and, do we all like that idea?
Definitely.
Keith is amused at us.
I thought there was some question about, it was more than just adding a bedroom. Wasn't there some fire law restrictions about?
That's what you get into after they file.
So, yeah, so we have to wait till after that. I mean, couldn't we just sort of circumvent everybody and say it's not a possible thing to do anyways and say if everybody?
Because that would be voting without a hearing.
Yeah.
Even though we know that there's other obstacles.
Right, I have gone as far as I can as, you know, and Leanne has too. And just saying, please check this, please check this, please check this, okay? But you can't stop anybody from filing whatever they want.
Write a check. Sure. It'll cost more attorney fees.
And then we have to open the hearing, but I just want to see what council may say about it, if that makes sense. And I'd probably like to hear about it before we even write up the, you know, and have her write up the.
Sure.
It seems outrageous for one bedroom for me, but, because you've got to go through all the septic and everything all over again.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like the septic is something that they could vote on, that makes sense to me. So, maybe she's assuming that's the only obstacle. I just, I didn't get a sense that she understood that there are other obstacles beyond the septic.
Well, the kind of thing that can happen, and I'm not saying it's gonna happen in this, but you have all kinds of wastewater and, you know, flooding and different things that happen and some neighbors could come in and say, you didn't keep your promise.
You have to have to keep in mind that she's got two different things going on there. So, right now she's talking about open the comprehensive permit. We, even if we approve a change to comprehensive permit, that doesn't necessarily mean she gets her apartment approved, the addition of the actual bedroom, so that, because then she's gonna have to come back and ask for.
An in-law apartment.
An in-law apartment waiver or approval. And that could still get disapproved because there may not be proper fire protection or whatever the issue may be. So, the comprehensive permit doesn't necessarily look at, are there smoke detectors, are there, you know, whatever the case may be. That look, that's looked at when you look at the apartment. So, you can get one approved and not, because the comprehensive permit is for the whole place, not an individual unit.
They had, they sent, we have a copy of something from, I know I got it through the end, that they had gone to the.
DEP?
DEP and they said everything was A-OK up there.
That's one gate that's open?
Yep, one okay, one check.
Okay, is everybody gonna be able to be here or are we?
God willing, I'll be here.
May 8th, right? And then, when is that dinner?
Oh.
June 13th.
June 13th, yeah.
So, that's, we can mention that again, but they want to know by May 20th or something.
That's a lovely inn, the Salem Cross Inn.
Is it?
I love it.
I'm still debating whether I'm gonna cancel dancing for that.
I, I love it, the Salem Cross Inn. It's a long ride, but it's lovely.
It is a long ride.
Should I check this rolling bus? Jenny's riding the bus. Hey, what about the COA bus? We can all go. We can all go. Hit your windows.
And you used to drive in it.
Oh, a piece of cake, it's easy to drive.
Yeah, we'd all have our own little viewing room.
You better get permission, so.
Well, if we can.
Okay.
I think Hollywood loves.
Could you just quickly, I know I'm not really going to care, but could you just quickly look at this? And see if, that's my application, even though the selectmen have already approved it. You've looked at it, right?
Oh, yeah.
Because that was a question, and I said I thought yes.
I think it's in like 20.
Oh, but not always at the same location, right?
Yeah, that's right, it's in the bar, that's right. Oh, yeah, we've been here.
Okay, just for the record, and while she's having a chance to look at this, I thought this came from Janet Latham, who is the mother, okay?
Virginia Mackie's mother?
Yes, the tenant.
Okay.
What is her name?
And it was from the assessors. And it said, hello, and I'm hoping you can help us determine what a BARTS list I needed. Did everybody hear earlier on how I talked, addressed that?
Yes.
Okay, then we don't really need to go through this. But I think I went as far as I can. I said, I can't speak for the ZBA board, but in past communications, I have discouraged Miss Latham from submitting a request for an in-law apartment without first reviewing the comprehensive permit and condo bylaws. Stipulations in either of both may affect our ability to entertain her request, number of units, or number of bedrooms, et cetera. The comprehensive permit EPA regulations and Board of Health regulations may have an impact. It's my understanding that this is also a low-slash-moderate income unit, so that may also have an effect. I had told Miss Latham that I didn't want her to assume the expense of a hearing only to find that we can't help her.
Did she say it was not affordable?
That's what I thought she said.
Did she say that?
She said it was not an affordable unit.
Yes, she didn't.
Well, that's increasing the ratio.
Oh, okay.
Pretty sure she's an affordable unit.
But that's what I thought.
She bought it after the 90 days, and it wasn't.
But that's not what she said.
She clearly stated it was not an affordable unit.
Tonight, yes. I heard that too.
So there's some description discrepancy here.
Description discrepancy.
Because that would in effect...
That would make a difference.
It would make a difference in the ratio.
Yes, and it would also make it, in fact, you have a supposedly non-affordable unit, and you ran an apartment that eventually could be rented out. There's some kind of a conflict or something there.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're going to have a fun meeting next month. Anybody want to?
This is lovely, thank you so much.
No, I said, thank you.
And we'll sign in the hi-lo?
I'm going to send you.
Oh, we have to sign the...
May I see that?
Anybody want?
Are we supposed to sign this?
That's the paper one.
Oh, I don't need that, I already did.
I need to sign the paperwork before I go.
I saw the packet.
Are we signing the hi-lo for 245?
Yes, we need to sign it.
Before conservation?
As long as it's got the notes on it.
Were you supposed to sign the approval, the decision?
I believe you were. Did you go by?
I didn't see it. Or I think it's back down at one.
Did I confiscate it?
Probably.
Well, we'll start, we'll start down there and send it back this way.
I don't think so. I think I passed it over.
Uh-oh.
I saw you, you signed it.
Oh, God, I hope I can blame you this time.
Go for it.
I made it down to me. Hang on.
It ends up in my pile, you'll never see it again.
Okay, I'm going to put a date on this as of the last hearing, which was what? February 10?
No, March.
March 13.
Yeah, because we were in April, I'll go there.
We is.
I don't know, we have to get my taxes done, or maybe in June or May 10.
Oh, I got mine done, I was so excited. First time in 40 years I got a refund.
Really?
Good girl.
Yeah.
Must be doing something right.
I don't know.
Okay, so we've got what, March?
No, it was right here, I saw it, you were signing it.
Yeah, I did see people signing it. You signed, huh? I signed, go by.
Did you guys sign it? You signed it, right?
No.
You didn't?
I passed it on.
Got it right there?
Yeah.
Write a paper slip right there.
You, you teeth, you. Sorry about that.
Let's see.
Oh, you didn't sign either.
I was just trying to take it home. I just grabbed everything. All right, what are we dating this, today?
Yes.
Whoa, excuse me.
Today's the 9th?
10th.
Oh, jeez.
Okay, I think, did you have anything you'd want to interject?
I don't know how much I can inform you on that property, or what's allowed.
Are you talking about Sawyer Hill LLC? You have to wait.
Yep, that's fine.
But there's a lot of pieces that have to go, I mean, the comprehensive permit, and then there's, I haven't signed the actual... And even if we sign the permit, there's no guarantee that what exists will be approved, so...
I'm surprised they're only going for one, because I know for a fact you're going to find half a dozen up there.
But how would you?
Only upon how we came across this one. We had a fire incident there. That's the only reason it came about.
Do we have to wait till they have fires?
It's either that or a property sale. I did a property sale today and found them using an attic for a bedroom.
Oh, that's right, because you have to do the inspection.
Yes. So it's no different than your own home. You could, you know, if you're supposed to have so many bedrooms, but obviously they have restrictions that they're supposed to abide by for the property and so forth.
Do you know that going into one, how many bedrooms are supposed to be in that unit?
What I, my process, I go get the property card for that particular address, and of course, the assessors have it on file that it's so many bedrooms. So that's when I go there and I see the devices that are in the locations and understand that. And of course, today, the people haven't moved yet, so I see it all set up.
Okay, well, I appreciate your comments, but we should probably save them for the hearing. Like I say, if you wanted to mention to board members at the association, that would be fine. But once the permit is filed, it can't be amended, so...
Will you be at the meetings?
I will.
You do a great job for us, really. Okay, would you pass this down to Leanne before I? And you've got the vellums, right? And that's for us, right? They're going to make a copy of it?
They did not say that, so I was going to file this with Eloise. I mean, there's a paper, there's a paper copy.
They have a signed copy already, right? They have a paper one?
Yes.
They need the vellum.
The vellum has to go to Eloise, right, to file, or to them to file.
Okay, yes, she gives it back to them after the time has gone by.
Conservation's got to sign it too.
I was just going to say, conservation, you may want to mention to Eloise if she wants to put a note in their basket that she has the vellum for them to sign. Okay, is this, I've got two of these things here, and I only came with one, so...
Yeah, he had two paper ones with the vellum.
Okay, let's pass this down to... Okay, anyone who's seen about this program department request that I have? I'm going to, I put this in, I just wanted to run it by the folks. You can take a look and see if you are happy with it, Leanne, and then... I can send you an electronic copy.
Okay, could you send me one too, please?
Actually, what I'll do is come down and sign it, and she can have the signed copy, and then she can send you an electronic one to sign.
Thank you.
What's this Berlin Planning Board public hearing? See the town board to amend the zoning bylaws, senior residential development.
Can I ask questions on this one?
Sure.
Who wants to build a development?
Who wants to what?
Do you know who wants to build a senior development?
At the, what's the sand and gravel property? Do you want to turn it into a 66-unit, 55 and over?
66 units?
Yes.
You know who's doing it?
Plus we've got one on Randall.
I don't have the individual's name. Actually, the person that came in that presented is working for the developer, so...
And this isn't, this is different than the Highland?
Yeah.
Right, Highland Ridge.
Do we have, is there a requirement to have a certain number of 55 or older units in the town, or depending on?
It's a desirable.
So they sell better than...
Well, there's a need for them. If you have 55 and over housing, you don't have a bunch of people moving in there with five-year-old kids who are going to spend the next 12 years going through the school system, so...
But that's the part that's getting crossed off. Yeah, it is.
Well, this shouldn't come, this shouldn't come to us anyway.
They just sent it out to all the town boards.
No, 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 but I mean, as far as even the sand pit down there.
Won't it though? If it's a X amount of units in a small area?
This is, will be cluster zoning or something.
It's an overlay district, I believe. Yeah, it says senior residential overlay district.
See, they're going to do overlay, just like they did down at the Rotary.
Do we have more copies of this?
Okay, go.
No, I, I just, like, I don't...
That black hole.
It should have been, did you read this one?
Do you have anything else?
No, I have that one.
It was the new style.
I'm sure I had a planning board one. I don't know what I did there. Oh, thank you.
Can you still say? Lost and proud.
I'll entertain a motion anytime you're ready.
Okay, and I'm a seconded.
Make a motion.
A meeting to adjourn.
Meeting to adjourn.
Gentlemen, all those who favor I? All those opposed? I'll take it as a unanimous vote to adjourn.